Found out by about mid-June, just a few weeks before he was killed, that this airstrip in Savan Zian existed and that these narcotics drops were happening there. And he gave the order to shut it down. The second thing is that Moise decided to crack down on Kiko Saint Remy.
The eel guy, right?
Yeah, the eel guy.
The brother-in-law of former President Michel Martel.
Now, customs in Haiti is notoriously corrupt. And Kiko apparently is very influential, according to several sources, who say that customs is forbidden from searching his shipments and that he oftentimes is able to allegedly skirt any customs duties or fees. So, Moise had told this friend that he had given the order that Kiko's shipments had to start being inspected and he had to start paying customs fees like everybody else. And the third thing that this source tells us is that Moise was compiling a list in the months and weeks before his death, breaking down the intricate networks of narco-traffickers in the country and the powerful Haitian businessmen and political figures who prop up that industry, including Kiko Saint Remy. And he was going to compile this list and hand it over to the US government. And that just completely floors me.
Why?
Well, because my colleague in Miami, Frances Robles, she was the first person to get an interview with Moise's widow, Martine Moise. And Martine told Frances at the time that the assassins, after, you know, they burst into the presidential residence, gunned down her husband and fired at her, and she pretended to play dead, lying on the floor.
They did find it.
And that Martine heard them, you know, as they're going through these files, these Colombian and Haitian assassins, they're saying, you know, "Is this it? Is this it? Is this it?" And then finally they say, "This is it." And they flee. And I think to myself, "That's the list." Several people told me that some of the hitmen confessed to searching for this list. And you might think, "Con." Like, he just had a list, a handwritten list somewhere? Like, he didn't put it into a computer? You should remember, Moise was, he came from a very humble, poor upbringing. Access to computer was probably not something that was a given in his childhood. And one of the things that we've been told is that Moise always had notebooks with him. We've heard this from several people on the record. And we also know that, you know, the FBI, in their investigation, apparently also took several of his notebooks. So then I started trying to figure out who helped compile the information that was going to go into this list and what do they know? And I find two people, high-ranking security sources, who confirmed that, yes, this list existed and, yes, they helped compile it.
But how big a threat would giving this list to the Americans actually be to the people on the list?
We have found in our reporting that US law enforcement agents are finding it very, very difficult to collaborate with Haitian police because they are notoriously corrupt. And we know, from speaking with high-level American officials in Washington, D.C., that the US doesn't have a wiretapping program in Haiti, which is really one of the key things if you're gonna make a case.
Right.
And remember that Moise knows a lot of these people that are on this list. He can really hand over the goods in a way that US law enforcement, you know, haven't been able to put the pieces of the puzzle together because their operations are so hindered across Haiti.
So this would have been a huge breakthrough for the Americans.
Yeah, exactly.
So, this list and everything you've told me about what he's doing, you know, moving to crack down on Kiko when it comes to customs and shutting down the airstrip, suggests that Moise presented a pretty major threat to the forces of corruption in Haiti, which seems to be a pretty clear motivation for killing him.
At this point, that's the working theory.
But I guess what I'm wondering is, why would he have decided to flip on these people he used to be pretty clearly associated with? Why would he turn on these people who essentially had elevated him to power?
Well, look, Moise was no saint. And there are all sorts of questions about why he was such good friends and business partners with people who are considered to be suspects in the drug trafficking world. And there were investigations into why he had such a huge flow of money in his bank accounts, he and his wife and one of his businesses. But Moise, he felt the people who put him into power were the people who were undermining his presidency. He wanted to give Haitians electricity and roads to try to do a few things for his constituents. And he felt like he was unable to do that because the corruption around the Martelis was so extreme and they were, you know, insisting, apparently, we've heard this from several of his associates, on certain contracts going to certain people, certain cabinet ministers being appointed. Kiko would oftentimes push allegedly to have the agricultural minister because he needs those eel contracts, remember that?
Right. Basically, Moise is asserting himself and rejecting Martelli's influence. So what happens now? I mean, what do you think will come from everything you've revealed?
I don't know. I don't have a lot of hope. Will the US government investigation go forward? We hear it stalled. Will the Haitian investigation go forward? You know, that's facing all sorts of problems. You had one judge and several court clerks go into hiding with all the evidence that they collected because they were being threatened by unknown assailants saying, you know, "Change witness testimony or be killed." So there's not a lot of hope in Haiti that this investigation will go anywhere.
What do you think is gonna happen to Kiko and to Martelli?
I mean, Kiko, he became as powerful as he's become because of Michel Martelli. And we know that Michel Martelli is living in Miami.
He lives in Miami?
Yeah, with his family.
Wow. What do you think it'll mean to Haitians if this assassination is never solved and no one is ever held to account?
They want this solved. Because if we can't solve who killed head of state, then how is the average Haitian gonna be able to walk through life thinking that they'll get any modicum of justice for anything that happens to them? If a presidential assassination can't be solved for a country of 11 million people, the majority of which are suffering from crazy underemployment, malnutrition, poverty, how are they gonna be taken seriously as citizens? How are their desires, wants, needs? How are they gonna be upheld in a state that is just this corrupt? Maria, thank you. Thank you for having me.
Maria Abi Habib is Mexico bureau chief for The New York Times. The Daily is supported by Aspiration, focused on combating climate change with the Aspiration credit card that helps members go carbon neutral. One card, zero carbon footprint. More at aspiration.com/credit. Aspiration Financial LLC. And by Fidelity Investments. Introducing Fidelity Income Planning. Build a plan for income that lasts. Fidelity Brokerage Services LLC member NYSE SIPC. And by American Public Media. The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily by going to nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Sabrina Tavernisi. See you tomorrow.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISE FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, WLUR Lexington. And in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
In 1973, my first year of residency, we didn't put breathing tubes into 28-week babies to try to save them because it was futile. And now we don't do it because it's not necessary, the same babies.
Fetal viability outside the womb. When Roe v. Wade was decided in 1973, viability was considered to be 28 weeks. Now, it's about 22 weeks.
20 years ago, in an interview with The New York Times, I said, "We can't possibly go earlier than 24 weeks." But here we are now at 22 weeks and 21 weeks. So I'm not willing to make predictions because I don't know what's gonna happen.
I'm Magna Chakrabarti. Today on Point, the question of viability is at the heart of a Mississippi case that could overturn Roe v. Wade. How is medical technology changing the viability threshold and the abortion debate? Stay with us.
Good evening. We are returning to our evening session for December 14th, 2021. The board held its opening session at 3:00 PM today, followed by work session and closed session. We move to item O, certification resolution. And the closed session just concluded. Nothing was discussed except the matter or matters which were identified in the motion to convene in closed session. Only those matters lawfully permitted to be discussed under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed. Do you have any questions from board members? If not, I ask for a motion to adopt that resolution.
Motion.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes, thank you. We move to item P, public hearing and second hearing of ordinances. Item number one, the petition of the Lawson Companies to amend existing proffered conditions on approximately 12.15 acres on property zoned R-3C, medium-density multifamily residential district, with conditions to construct 216 apartments located in the 5,000 block of Cove Road, the 2,700 block of Peters Creek Road and south of Beacon Ridge subdivision in the Catawba Magisterial District. Mr. Philip Thompson, Director of Planning, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board. Kind of go through this PowerPoint, kind of go through, over the project a little bit. As you mentioned, they are looking to amend existing proffered conditions. The way you do that is through the rezoning process. So, the property, the 12.15 acres, is located near the intersection of Cove Road and Peters Creek Road in the Catawba District. It sits behind the CBS there at, well, it's on that intersection of Cove Road and Peters Creek Road. Zooming in a little bit, it's in the 5,000 block of Cove Road and the 2,700 block of Peters Creek Road. Again, it is 12.15 acres, currently vacant or wooded. There's nothing on the property. They are proposing an apartment complex with 216 apartments. Couple photographs. So the photograph is on the left and then there's a little map with an arrow showing kind of the viewpoint of the property. Just kind of looking from the CBS pharmacy parking lot, looking up the one side of the property, kind of get a little indication of some of the elevation of the property. This is looking kind of across their entrance only off of Peters Creek Road. The fenced area is the stormwater management pond on the CBS property. This view is kind of looking at the adjacent kind of driveway that goes to a dilapidated house, I believe, on the Jason property. So it's just a little bit to the, where that tree line is, kind of the edge of the property. This is looking at the end of Cadillac Circle. You can see that. And then the next photo shows the two houses on either side at the end of that cul-de-sac. They are not proposing any access on the Cadillac Circle. There's that buffer that they are proposing, which I'll get to in a second. This is, you know, it's kind of a wooded site, kind of, this is typical of the entire site of the type of woods that are on the property. And then lastly, this is the site, kind of looking at the entrance off of Cove Road. You can see across through their sheets, but then their CBS, where their entrance would be onto Cove Road. So a little bit about the zoning background. This property was rezoned in 1984. It was rezoned from residential district, which was R1, and business district, which was B2, to then a residential district that was R6 with conditions. Their purpose was to construct 185 residential apartment condominiums. Obviously, that development never happened, it was never constructed. In 92, when the countywide rezoning went through, the property was designated its current zoning of R3C. So they are proposing to amend the three existing proffered conditions. The first one, first condition says that the petitioner shall build only residential condominium units on the subject property and the petition will not build any units to be rented on a government-subsidized rental basis based on Virginia Housing Act, Fair Housing Act. It really is no longer legal. So they're striking that and replacing that with a typical proffer that we get for projects in accordance with the concept plan that's been submitted with the application. The second one, they clarify, just adding Cadillac Circle to the Beacon Ridge subdivision, that there shall be no street access from the subject property to Beacon Ridge. They just add the road, Cadillac Circle. And the third one, where they had the maximum number of 185 units, they've increased that or strike that, increased that to 216. So that's the proposed amendments to the proffers that they are seeking. Concept plan is in your application or is in your board report. It has seven apartment buildings. They're two different sizes. There are gonna be three stories in height. There was some confusion between three and four stories. I think the original concept plan that we got from the applicant had the smaller units showing as four stories. They corrected that. That was an error on their part. And it is, the revised concept plan is, the correct concept plan is in your packet. So, three stories in height is what is being proposed. Other 216 apartments, 36 are proposed to be one-bedroom apartments, 135 are two-bedroom apartments, and 45 are three-bedroom apartments. There's also a clubhouse on the property, maintenance building. They have two access points. One on Cove Road would be an entrance and exit to the property. The one on Peters Creek is only entrance only. In addition to that, there'll be parking sidewalks, lighting, trash compactors, mailboxes, and stormwater management throughout the project. And they are, the project will be built in three phases. They can go into a little bit more about that during their presentation. Architectural rendering, they'll go into more detail over that they presented in their application. If you look what this looked like. As far as existing zoning, it is R3C, which is medium-density multifamily residential district with conditions. Surrounding zoning to the north, it's R1 and R2, which is more single-family residential. To the east is R3 and C2. C2 is high-intensity commercial. To the west is R2, again, more single-family residential. And to the south, which is in the city, ROS is Recreation Open Space and Commercial Neighborhood is the two districts they have there. As far as the future land use map, most of the property is transition. There's a small portion that's neighborhood conservation. That portion that's neighborhood conservation is shown in the buffer. I should also mention that. Let me go back real quick. So in their concept plan, they do show a buffer adjacent to Beacon Ridge. It's roughly about 200 feet in width. So that portion of the property is the neighborhood conservation portion of the designation. So, transition in court encourages the orderly development of highway frontage parcels, serves as a developed buffer between highways nearby or adjacent to lower intensity development. It is suitable, suitable land uses include office institutional uses, limited retail uses, multifamily residential, single-family attached residential in parks, neighborhood conservation. Those typically are established single-family residential neighborhoods and are delineated, and the intent is to conserve the existing development pattern. The Planet Commission held a public hearing last week on December 6th, or six, citizens who spoke during the public hearing said some comments. Concerns included increased traffic, traffic congestion, traffic safety, pedestrian safety along Cove Road, height of apartment buildings, access to water and sewer, adjacent property owner had asked about that. Proposed buffer areas, not only the widths, but what would be contained within them, what type of fencing or barriers would be in place. They talked about the grading of the site and how the site will be built. Stormwater runoff, erosion center control were also concerns by adjacent citizens, impact to neighboring wells, as well as noise, lighting and loss of wildlife habitat. The planning commission discussed the zoning history of the property, the surrounding uses in zoning, the transition, the future land use designation, changes to the R3 zoning standards, tax credits, as well as stormwater management, ENS, or erosion center control, fencing and buffers, traffic congestion, traffic safety, pedestrian safety, site development and lighting. The planning commission did recommend approval to amend the existing proffered conditions as proposed by the applicant. Staff also recommends approval of the petition. And with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Members, you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So this is in the Catawba District and so I have a few questions for you, Mr. Thompson. And some of them are just for points of clarification, but I would like to ask the questions. So the current zoning is R3.
Correct.
And the real point of discussion tonight is really about the proffers and how they need to be amended or how they're requesting for some amendments to those proffers.
Correct.
I know that there was some discussion. Some people understood that there was some commercial property involved, but there's no commercial property involved.
No. Well, the secondary access, or the access from Peters Creek Road, there's a slight, a slight, a small piece of property. It is zoned commercial.
Okay.
Okay. It's not part of this because the access across that could be allowed into this. There's no units being built part of that, right? It's just access. So you can have a higher, you could have, obviously, if it was lower intensity use, you can, but if it's a higher intensity use, you could have access across that. So it's not part of the, it's not part of the rezoning request because there's no proffered conditions associated with that. It is part of their project because that's their secondary access to Peters Creek Road.
Okay, so it is a part of the project?
Not part of the rezoning.
But not part of the rezoning, thank you?
Correct.
Okay. So the density allowed by right in R3, 18?
Currently is 18 units per acre.
18 units according to our zoning ordinance?
Correct.
And the density requested for 216 units is?
17.77.
That's what I calculated.
I believe in their application.
That's what I calculated too. But from the 185 units, according to the existing profits, actually, is a little less. It's like 15.2.
Yeah.
So the bottom line is, before, I'd like to hear from the petitioner here in a minute. Is this type of development allowed by right as it currently exists, notwithstanding the proffered conditions?
Yes. If it was just R3, they would be able to build the project without having to come before you.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to clarify that because the focus really is on the proffers. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Thompson, I guess I just didn't understand the access point off Peters Creek Road. Why is it entrance only? Why couldn't it be used entrance and exit?
I don't think it's wide enough.
Okay, so it's a width issue?
I believe so. They could clarify that. Thus, I would imagine they would have full access if they had the width to be able to do so.
I wasn't sure if it was a width or a size issue or whether, because it has access to Peters Creek Road, whether there was, Roanoke City had some limitations on access points.
I think it's a width issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney, I'm gonna follow up on your question. So that access point, is it, is it an easement or is it?
It's actually a property. It's not an easement. It's a piece of property.
Okay, so it's?
It's a own separate parcel that they own.
Okay.
It's not part of this rezoning because it's zoned appropriately for the access.
Okay, so one of the questions I'm gonna ask the petitioner is why it can't be switched instead of entrance only, access only? Because we're gonna hear from the folks and we know there's a problem trying to turn left. So I just wanna give them a little bit of heads up so they can figure that out when they get up here.
So make it exit only, not entrance only?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, on the school capacity enrollments and additional students. So you mean to tell me that there's only gonna be 48 additional students in 186 of our 216-unit complex? Seems small to me.
I'll let them explain that. I think what they utilized, I think, national standards in developing the generation of schoolchildren for their project. I will say that we did submit that or send comments or send the application over to schools and we never got any comments back from that.
Well, from what I can discern, if these numbers are right on capacity enrollment, the combined collective total yields only a 71% capacity. There's plenty of room. I'm just, was looking at the numbers for the additional students. It's such a small amount.
Correct. I'll let them explain.
Thank you.
All right. We certainly like to hear from the representative of the petitioners at this point.
Good evening. John Povac, 658 Old Farm Road. An attorney working with Lawson Companies. Exciting to be here tonight because we've got a company that's had an established record in Virginia developing affordable housing. You're gonna hear about, you know, how many units they have under management and they wanna invest in our community. You know, they've got location in Lynchburg and, you know, so it's exciting to have outside investment in our community. We think it's a pretty surgical approach, right? The decision on residential property and the use here was made in 1984. Obviously, the same owners that entitled the property in 1984 still own it today. They would have liked it, that it had been developed, consistent with those proffers at that time. You know, market conditions haven't reflected that. As Mr. Thompson and his staff noted, they've thoroughly reviewed the application. They understand, again, it's really two parts. It's change in fair housing law, that you really can't restrict source of funds anymore, which is, you know, limited to that. And, you know, we'll spend some time talking about what this project really means in terms of affordable housing. And then, again, really just trying to confirm, to bring the property under by right. You know, when the Lawson Companies looked at the property, they considered it, you know, a close to a by right, really just changing these conditions. And we think it, you know, it makes, it makes sense from a good land use. You know, the comprehensive plan talks about a transitional use. When you look at that map, right, it's, you know, I think planners would agree, you know, when you have retail stepping back to multifamily, stepping back to, you know, single-family homes, that's kind of how it's supposed to work along major thoroughfares like that. So, you know, again, it's, we think it's the highest and best use of the property, but we know there are concerns. Anytime you develop any new development, there's the tension between what's existing today and should it remain or whether, what should come of that. But, you know, we think we, what we wanna spend some time is just going through some of those things we heard at the planning commission or heard from staff that we think are relevant in terms of traffic, safety, affordable housing. And we, you know, really wanna make sure we educate the board, give the board the opportunity to ask any questions and we ask for your favorable decision. I'm gonna turn it over to Freddie Fletcher, who's a development manager, and then either he or I will be available to answer questions. Thanks.
Frederick Fletcher, three one twenty-four, Cooper's Arch, Virginia Beach, Virginia. And thank you to the board, and thank you to Mr. Thompson as well. It's been a pleasure working up here, we've really enjoyed it thus far. So excited to be in front of you today. Would you mind keying up the slides?
I didn't know you had them.
That'd be great, thank you. So excited to be back in Roanoke County this week, and talk through our project. So as Mr. Thompson mentioned, we take full ownership of our error of the four-story versus three-story issue. These are all three stories, and the updated proffer, proffered site plan will reflect that, or has reflected that. So as you can see, Mr. Thompson outlined, our community really tries to save a buffer along Candlelight Circle, and I think we did a disservice last week of not explaining that there are still buffers along the entire property. Multifamily development standards here in the county require those buffers. And so we will have a twenty-plus foot buffer along the back parcel that's the showing as parcel five, as well as parcel four, three and two. And we do have a lot of grade in those areas as well. So that is ever-changing. I think last week I spoke about a retaining wall. As of this week, the engineers are showing that that retaining wall may have actually been able to go away, and we're able to slope it. The benefits there is that means we're able to put more landscaping in that area. So we would expect to heavily landscape it above and beyond the county minimum that the county would require in a buffer area regardless. A couple other points of clarification, just while we've got the site plan up. The access road, it is a, it's a narrow road, and it's a grading issue. So if we were able to keep it at grade, we would be able to fit ingress and egress. But because of, we need to actually reach to be higher grade, the slope comes primarily off Peters Creek and up pretty steeply, we have to actually build small retaining walls on both sides. Those retaining walls come in, in effect narrowing the tabletop that we have to build our road on. So it will be single directional traffic. I think there was a question about why ingress. I think frankly, that's what we picked, but we are in the conversations and have scoped a traffic impact analysis with Roanoke City, who has jurisdiction over both Cove Road and Peters Creek. And we would be happy to have that conversation about that being an egress only versus an ingress only. That was more so just, it seemed like ingress made more sense. So we are happy to be flexible there, and we've, like I said, had a call last week after the planning commission meeting with those traffic engineers from the city, who will be part of our site plan approval process. So the Roanoke County Transportation Engineers will actually route our plans over to them. Couple other points I just want to touch on quickly. We've driven the market, and we really, we're seeing this property as a close corollary to the retreat that's just up the road. And, you know, we would expect to have clubhouse, pool, state-of-the-art fitness center, all of the amenities you would expect at a Class A property. And another point of concern last week was pedestrian access. That's something that we all hold near and dear at Lawson, we all enjoy. We typically work in a mix of suburban and urban areas. And so we will have pedestrian access throughout our site, and from our site, and we've already instructed the engineers to put a sidewalk across our frontage. We don't own, or we will not own much frontage along Cove Road, but along our frontage, we will have ADA accessible pedestrian route that will run. You know, we'd love to see that connect through the CVS and further, but we just don't have the property rights to be able to put sidewalks in there. And then another point of concern that I hope we can address is security. So the entire area of the property will be fenced, we'll fence on the inside of the buffer area, so as to not disturb the Candlelight Circle residents, but the entirety of the property will be fenced in, in black aluminum picket fencing. And then during construction, this was also a concern, the construction sites won't have that black aluminum fencing, but they will have your typical construction security fencing and EMS controls, keeping people out. And then beyond that, we have very strict lighting requirements that come from Virginia Housing, of one-foot candles, so the property will be well lit, we'll have video security, and then we've got access control to all the common spaces. And please interrupt me and ask any questions as I'm, as I'm going through this. On the building side, so we pride ourselves, everything will be Energy Star and Earthcraft, so it's a higher standard of building. We will also have a higher level of stormwater management, because that's, Earthcraft requires us to manage twenty-five percent more than whatever the municipality minimum is. So we will have more onsite stormwater management, and actually tax the system less than what the by right development would. As of now, it looks like the majority of that will be underground, although we're hopeful to have some attractive above-ground BMPs that'll be landscaped as well, but we're in the engineering process there. As I mentioned, three-story building design, it will be a mix, it will land at right about fifty-fifty, fiber cement board, the cardie board, and brick. And it will be, again, I keep going back to retreat, we really like that, we feel like it complements the area, so I think we're going to pull a lot of our design cues off of that. So it'll be modern, but not overly modern for the county and location of the site. And then, I guess I mentioned kind of the exteriors, but the interiors, granite counters, high-quality black appliances, and then wood look floors and carpet in the bedrooms. So again, pretty much identical to what you're seeing in the Class A developments these days. A little bit about who we are, so we've been here in Virginia for over fifty years, we manage fifty-eight hundred units, and we've got twelve hundred on top of that in development. I'm here, I'm on the development team, we have a construction team that would ultimately take it over and build it, we've got a property management team that will ultimately manage it, we have an asset management team that will decide what to do with it in fifty years when we probably recapitalize it. So we are long-term holders, and we'll own this property well beyond when I'm still at the Lawson Companies. So we will be here in Roanoke County for a very long time. And then, again, we're really across the state, and we've focused in on the county and just the Roanoke Valley overall. There was an affordable housing study done that specifically called out the need for affordable housing here in the community, and then we were absolutely shocked when we saw the level of rents, and we can, we'll talk about that, at the newly developed Class A properties in the market. Design side, this is more of a trust in us, but we do have, and have won recent awards nationally, regionally, at the state level, including NAHB, which is a big national award, Navogradic, who really administers a tax credit program, and then some more kind of coastal Virginia Hampton Roads associated awards. So this is why we do what we do, and why we're excited about being here in Roanoke County. The Roanoke County study, that was a group of, I believe, the county, the city, Salem City, Batata, and maybe a couple of the other outline counties, identified eighteen, over eighteen thousand families that would be income-eligible to live within our communities. So that means they make really anywhere between forty and sixty percent of area median income. And you'll hear that referenced a couple times, and I'll explain that. That's basically the median income for the entire area, and they pull it off of, so Roanoke County would be lumped in with the whole valley. That AMI takes sixty percent of it, and that's going to be your kind of income band that people that live in the community would be able to live in, and I've got the numbers here on that. And then they would be paying thirty percent of their income in rent, which is really the golden number in housing. If you're paying more than that, you're rent or housing burdened, and therefore not being able to pay for medical care, you know, the right food, the right things for your kids. So that's really what struck us. Seventeen thousand of those eighteen thousand families are in that rent burden category, so they're paying more than thirty percent of their income in rent, which means that only about nine point seven percent of the current housing stock is sufficient for the number of residents that really make within those bands. And what's important to note is those residents aren't not working, they're not making minimum wage, they're making anywhere from, for a single-person household, twenty-eight thousand dollars, up to a four-person household of fifty thousand dollars. And so here in the county, that would include, I think I saw bus drivers make sixteen fifty, and I'm sure, if you're anything like Virginia Beach, you need more bus drivers right now, because we do. And so bus drivers make sixteen fifty an hour, which comes out to about thirty thousand dollars a year. So they would be able to live in our community. Entry-level fire and emergency services, folks could live in our community. A lot of administrative assistance, medical strides at the Excedent Corillian developments that continue. And then, again, entry-level teachers, servers, and something that we've found is, it doesn't seem as though Roanoke County and the Roanoke Valley overall has the housing to bring Roanoke County residents back. After they've come out of school, after they've moved away for a little while to come back and find housing that they're proud to call home, they're either having to go further and then drive in, or they're not able to come back, and so they're living elsewhere. We think this all, two hundred and sixteen units, will not solve the whole problem, but we think it starts solving it. On, again, really, you see the cost burden more so on the, on the rental side, owner households, again, because you've got financial constraints on the lender, they don't seem to have that same issue. And then here's just a, kind of a rundown of some of the typical areas. We find that for us, it's a lot of the jobs that I mentioned, as well as retail employees, hospitality employees, again, the employees that right now we're finding just aren't around. And so by building units that are affordable for them, we're going to be able to bring in more of those kind of employees. I know this was also a concern, and we pulled this from National Association of Home Builders, a national group, and it basically comes out to about point two-two children per unit. And I'll show here, so, you know, we can basically build these two hundred and sixteen units, if you were to put a hundred units on this site, we would be creating more housing with fewer children. However, that number is a national number, so I do want to caveat that, it is not a Roanoke County number, we can't find anything here that's even southwestern Virginia-focused. But we feel very confident, even if that number is off by a factor of, you know, if it's point four-four students, you know, it doubles this number, we still have ample capacity. And I don't pretend to work in the school system, but I do know that undercapacity can also be a concern, and just based on where Northside Middle and High, which are two beautiful high schools and middle schools.
Oh my gosh.
Are built, it doesn't seem, it seems like we're undercapacity, which it actually could be a concern as well. On traffic, multifamily units, just as studied, create fewer trips per week, they have fewer cars, and therefore will make fewer trips, usually fewer residents live in each unit as well. So this is based off of the International Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Calculator. However, we're in process now, started this week, on traffic counts for the intersections surrounding our site, as well as Peters Creek and Cove Road. And that was scoped, we had a meeting last week with the Roanoke City Traffic Engineers, we scoped that out, they added some things to the scope, and we've, we've got those in now, and we've got traffic counts ongoing this week, so we can get them in before the school holidays kick off, I think, next week. So that said, in conversation with them, they don't have concerns. Cove Road, as it stands today, has plenty of capacity. It's running at about twenty to twenty-five percent of its capacity. I know that's hard to believe, if you go and you sit at the light at Cove Road trying to get out of Peters Creek and take a left. What it seems to be the issue, and again, the traffic study will bear this out, is that the signal at Peters Creek and Cove Road is just off. It was, it hasn't been re-timed in quite a while. And there's easy ways to do that, and our traffic study will allow them to ultimately do that, where you will be able to get out of Cove Road more quickly. That may be one of the solutions, another may be that we change our ingress to an egress, and that's a, that's a great example as well. So that is something where the data from, you know, VDOT shows we're fine, but we're actually going out gathering real data now, and that's something that we'll work through with the county and with the city through the site plan approval process. Couple last points here, affordable housing, what is it, you know, are we bringing in people that don't live in the area that are, you know, going to bring a criminal element or security issues to our neighborhood? And that is not the case. One, we get the phone call if anything goes wrong, we're going to be managing it, we're here as part of our property management team, there are background checks, there's credit checks, these tenants will be paying seven hundred and eighty dollars a month for a one-bedroom apartment, nine hundred and forty dollars a month for a two, and just over a thousand dollars a month for a three-bedroom, which, based on when I came out of school, doesn't sound even all that affordable, but if you look at what they're paying at the retreat, it's almost twelve hundred and fifty dollars for a one-bedroom, and nineteen hundred dollars for a three-bedroom. So it is affordable compared to what the market is at today. However, you can't be unemployed and pay seven hundred and eighty dollars a month for an apartment. So the subsidy runs to the developer through tax credits. The renter, the resident, will be paying rent monthly. And again, they'll be subject to background checks and credit checks, just as any landlord would typically do. And what we find, and we would expect to be the same here, is that these are residents that live in Roanoke County and are currently struggling to pay the bills, they're, you know, having to sacrifice in a certain area to be able to make ends meet, or they're living in substandard housing, housing that had, you know, was built in the forties and the fifties and the sixties and hasn't been updated, and instead could move into a property that's going to, again, have really these nice Class A amenities. So we will also be very cognizant of, you know, as any development would, making sure that the way we build the property is not conducive to any crime, whether it's from our residents or others. And so, you know, whether that's lighting, security, onsite property management, who's on site from eight to six P M. daily, fencing, things of that nature. And we will have both the police and fire and EMS will be part of our site plan review process. So any concerns that they have, we'll work through there. And then the last piece here is the economic impact. So in the short term, there's a big impact, we're going to roll out a big construction team, they're going to come up, we would expect somewhere between thirty-three and thirty-four million dollars of investment to build the whole property out, the three phases. But then ultimately, we're going to see continuation of that over the long haul, and you can see the numbers bear out there. One thing I realized I missed, and meant to add, this would be a phased community, so we would not expect, you know, we will not see two hundred and sixteen units arriving on your doorstep tomorrow. The initial seventy-two units would likely break ground end of twenty twenty-two or early twenty twenty-three, so we're still a ways off from that. And then we're basically on one-year cycles after that. So the next year, we'd break ground on the following seventy-two units, and then again, the subsequent seventy-two after that. However, during construction, we have very strict erosion sediment controls and things that will limit any impact or eliminate any impact to the neighboring properties. So I think with that, I'll put the site plan back up, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have quite a few questions for the petitioner, if I may begin. I just, and some of this I just want repeated, to make sure that there's clear understanding, both on my part, and so citizens can hear your response, and there's a clear understanding with staff, but I've heard it several times now that there will be no four-story buildings.
That's correct, yes, no four-story buildings. And, you know, that will be in the proffering amendment, so we couldn't even come back and renege on that, no four-story buildings.
So can you show us on this map where the trash receptacle, where the dumpster will be?
Yes, and it's, just given the size of the map, it's going to be a little difficult. But if you're looking between buildings F and B, we will have one there, it makes it the easiest for the dumpster to turn around. However, similar again, to keep leveraging off the retreat, that will be a masonry enclosed structure, so it will be full masonry, it will be a compactor in there, along with a recycling kind of bay adjacent to it, and that will be central to phase one. Phase two would ultimately have one likely tucked up there, and again, engineering is still ongoing, but next to building E. And then the last one will likely end up actually fitting between building C and D, and we'll have to steal a couple parking spaces to put that in there. But we'll have three smaller compactors, we find that helps, people don't like to carry their trash too far, so that's.
I would agree. I was just curious, because it seems like I sat in on part of the planning commission meeting, most of it, but I was hearing some kind of commentary about the, as a vehicle would come to empty the receptacle, the dumpster, that they may have to use your ingress to do that. But the way I'm seeing it, and the way you're describing it now, maybe they could do it even from those parking spaces? How would they, how, what's the vision for emptying that, in that location?
And we work with. And we work with the waste companies, we're designing this, so they make sure they've got the right turn radiuses, things of that nature. Ultimately, what we'll do is we'll probably have to delete a couple parking spaces. And so those kind of get angled, they're able to pull forward, they can dump from back or from front typically out of these compactors. They'll pull forward and then back in, or in some locations, they'll pull in straight and then back out. But I wish I had a final answer, just given where we are in site plan design. I don't. However, access for the garbage trucks is something my property, our property management team harps on us. So, I will, that will be a major concern. And then also, that area that the garbage truck is turning around in, driving on, will have enhanced concrete or strengthened concrete and asphalt underneath it, so that it's not cracking or spalling or anything of that nature.
So, back to the secondary entrance, and right now you all have it labeled as an ingress, that, from what I'm hearing, you say there's really no chance of it being two-way traffic there. I just see that as being such a wonderful option. If that was at all possible, it would really alleviate the, some of the traffic concerns that I have. I know that the, it would have to be right turn only, entrance right turn and right turn exiting only, coming onto Peters Creek. But what I hear you saying is that that's just not even possible.
I never, like to say never. So, I, and again, we're in the engineering process now. Having spoken with our engineer yesterday, those are already 10-plus or minus-foot walls, and you can see with the CVS, that topography really comes up. And so they have a wall behind CVS. We'll have something similar, and then those walls require guardrails and set inside of them for vehicular safety. So, as it stands today, we just, we don't have the space. And I don't think anybody, whether it was loss and companies or another applicant, would have that space. That said, we want our residents to have access as well. That's a big, you know, selling point. And so, we'll continue to study it and also study whether it makes more sense, is that being an ingress and egress, through our traffic impact analysis. But as it sits today, it looks as though we're only going to have the width.
One lane. I've got a list of questions, so please bear with me. I was wondering about the elevation for the rear properties. I know that you had mentioned again tonight that maybe the retaining wall wasn't going to be as substantial as you earlier thought. You don't have any renderings of what that may look like. Can you just describe them again for what those, what that elevation may look like in the sloped area? You said maybe two-foot walls, but maybe several of them, so it would be stepped.
Correct, yes. So, I think one of the biggest concerns was if we do a large wall, and you plant, you know, a tree at its immature stage, a, you know, 15-foot wall is going to, in effect, make that tree invisible to the residents above. It looks like now that we've gotten that down to more of a slope or even a couple steps, but within those steps, and you see those around the county, there would be landings. So, within those landings, we would expect to plant. But if we slope the whole thing, we'll be able to plant even more substantially. So, that was one of the concerns. We echoed back to our engineers, and they have worked to reconfigure certain other areas, and so bring that grade a little bit more up. And so then ultimately, we're looking at more landscaping there. And the county has a very specific requirement around.
They do.
The density of the plantings, the kind of plantings that can be in there, you know, trees versus shrubbery versus ground cover. So, you know, we'll be following that, and we typically, and here most certainly will be signing up with our civil engineer for the, what we call the enhanced landscaping. So, county minimum, and then we do the enhanced landscaping, because we find that's some of the biggest bang for your buck you can get is by doing really nice landscaping out of these communities.
So, Roanoke County did not request a traffic impact analysis, is what I'm understanding, but you're working with Roanoke City to get that completed, is what I'm understanding.
That's correct. So, last week, as we were coming into planning commission, we got the letter handed to us from the city engineers. We reached out to them the next day. And so, scoped that, basically decided upon the limits of our study, which intersections, which roads would be considered. We actually are using a pretty aggressive multiplier, COVID multiplier, so traffic has been down recently due to COVID. Seems as though it's picked up, but we're still using a multiplier in excess of 20% to 25% above and beyond what we're actually counting out there. So, we're probably going to ultimately come out with a traffic count that's more aggressive or more, I guess, maybe conservative from the county's perspective than what's really there.
Sure, I'm looking forward to seeing that. The chief hall had some commentary in the staff report, and I appreciated you addressing that regarding the safety and security and any crime element that may be involved. And we acknowledge that it's, our police are short-staffed. We're working on that. I think we're making inroads, we're certainly trying to recruit and looking what we can do to better that, but that is still an issue. And it's not anything about any particular development. I think just the more intense development, the more things can go wrong. And so, I just want to kind of acknowledge that, mention that. I appreciated you going over the formulas for the school impact. I feel like it will be more than that, and I think for some families dealing with multiple bedrooms and children, that they will tend to, you know, have more than just one or two children in a bedroom. So, I agree with you, though, that I think the schools can handle it, even if it was doubled. I mean, the numbers prove that, and I appreciated you bringing that forward. I wanted to hear what the targeted household income was for, I thought I saw something about $70,000 for the household income was the target, but then I couldn't go back and find that number, so.
So, the area median income for a four-person household here in the Roanoke Valley, so it's not specific to the county, they study it kind of in a larger geographic area, is $78,400. So, our targets will, that's a four-person household, so our targets are 60% renters of that. So, for a four-person household, that's about $48,000. And one point of clarification, because this comes up frequently, if you are an entry-level firefighter making, and you're a single, which means your income limit is about $33,000, you come in making $30,000 and you're doing a great job and make $35,000 the next year, it does not mean that you were kicked out of your apartment, that you can live in that apartment as long as you would like. Somebody cannot move in with income above the income limits or the income reservation areas. But if they do go above and beyond those limits, there's some compliance stuff we have to take care of on our end, but it does not impact that resident in the least. They can live there as long as they wish with those incomes. So, that's just always important, because it, we don't want to disincentivize our residents from making more money.
So, you described the three phases, and so if you would take it back to the slide that shows, there it is. And so, I understood you say that you will break ground in 2022?
Yes, and it would be just about now in 2022 or likely early 2023. So, where we'll go from here is site plan review. We have the Virginia Housing, Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program application process that takes anywhere from six to nine months, and that's something that we've done. We're 17 for 17, so our last 17 applications have been accepted and approved. And it is a competitive process, and we pride ourselves on having done well at that. So, that would be approved, and we'd ultimately be looking for, you know, pulling building permits and really getting things rolling in December, and then kind of continuing site work through the early part of 2023 with an expected initial delivery date of those first two buildings, the 72 units, at the tail end of, well, really at probably Q1, Q2 of 2024. So, again, it is out there in the future that we have some time. I think that's also a concern sometimes we hear is, you know, is this going to show up overnight? With us, it most certainly won't, because we like to take our time and make sure that we're methodical in our approach.
So, then Phase Two and Phase Three, if I heard you correctly, they're about one year each following 2024, say?
That's correct. So, the delivery of these units in 2024 for Phase One, ultimately, Phase Two would have started construction by the time Phase One is being delivered. However, it wouldn't deliver its units until Q1, Q2 of 2025, and then ultimately the final phase in 2026.
So, the rear buffer yard is, and I understand, and as you have it on this concept plan, which is being submitted as part of the proffered process, is that will remain wooded?
Correct, yes. Our intent and the way it's shown here, and the reason we've called it out specifically as buffer, is it will remain wooded. Again, in full transparency, the, there are some utility lines that run through there, and there's actually been a request, and we have yet to have been able to connect with an adjacent owner for an easement potentially to actually access some of those utilities. But that would be, you basically have to clear a very small area, a path for those utility lines to run. However, especially up near Candlelight, we would not be even putting our fence up there. So, there would be no notice and something that's important. It's not just a tree buffer, it's really a light buffer. So, all of our projects, communities are required to be dark sky compliant. It's part of our EarthCraft program. So, while we have really ample ground lighting, we're not allowed to have anything that's up. So, because of that, there's very little, if any, light pollution that comes from our community, so you will not see the light. And then we also have the easel cut off. So, you know, during the day, it's energy efficient, but also, if it's, you know, a cloudier day, you won't have that, you know, bright light glaring in your eyes or coming up the street.
Can you just review real quickly on the, on the site plan here, where the fencing will go?
Mm-hmm.
I know that you said perimeter. I would just like to see or hear from you how it's going to be put in place during the phases.
Yes, so what we would expect is, and it's kind of hard to pick up on the colors, but it's kind of a black navy color that delineates Phase One. Phase One would be fenced along, it's actually Verizon owns that building, it's parcel two, there's a cell tower there. There'd be fencing along that area with, it's likely fencing on top of, there is still a retaining wall there, so it would be fencing slash guardrail on top of that retaining wall. We, just to enhance the look of the property, will not, will likely not fence the frontage along Cove. Again, we'll have sidewalks.
Sure.
Sorry. Getting too excited. We'll have a sidewalk there, along with landscaping, along Cove Road. So, no fencing there. Will be required to fence along the back of the CVS, because that will be a retaining wall. Any, and then along the entrance as well, will be a retaining wall. Then carryover around parcel nine, we'll fence in that area behind building G, and then we'll fence up to kind of where Phase One ends. And the backside, where that pink line touches the darker line, that would be construction temporary fencing, because obviously ultimately, we're going to bring that down and fence around the backside. We would continue that on, and the only place where it doesn't go outside on the property line, so the purple dash line would all be fenced, the pink line down there beyond the purple would be fenced, and then we'd pink up along parcel eight, where the pink is, and then we would come inside of the tree buffer and fence along there. So, there'd be no access, you know, of a pedestrian from Candlelight down to our site. Instead, it will be fenced there, so there won't be an access point.
Understood. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for now. I'm sure I'll have more later after Citizen's speed.
Okay. Mr. North?
Yeah, one question. Is the rental office going to be on-site?
Yes, sir. So, the clubhouse will have our leasing office, fitness center, a club room, and then restrooms. And adjacent to that, we've got our maintenance building. So, we'll have onsite maintenance staff, probably two or three maintenance staffers, and then we'll have a property manager, and once the property is fully built out, two leasing staff on-site.
Okay, thank you. All right, I got a few questions. How are you going to, I'm very familiar with NHB and their ratio, and so they, they and another association say the capacity for bedrooms are two per person. How do y'all plan to monitor the bedroom capacity? Or how do you do that in your past, in your present jobs?
Yes, no, that's a great question. So, it's very specific when we're actually going in for our certificates of occupancy on the building. We have to post in our management office, as well as on the leasing website, occupancy restrictions. And then, when leasing the property, we have our property managers go over that. We have rarely had issues with overfilling bedrooms. However, when we do, our property managers, given that they're on staff 40-plus hours a week, they can pretty quickly identify it and move to rectify it. So, you know, again, there's strict from a fire and safety perspective requirements, and we take any kind of safety and compliance really strictly there. So, that would really be up to the property management team to notice, and then they would act on that.
So, do you have provisions in your lease to restrict the capacity if you find out they're over?
We do, yes. So, we will, and then they, we like to give them an opportunity to rectify if they are over capacity, whether that's renting a larger unit or an additional unit, and then ultimately have to figure out another solution for them. But no, we, it is clearly spelled out in leasing agreement, and is something that we're very clear on, because there's also a compliance piece there. So, a four-person household means there's a certain level of income that can be, you know, we're reserved for. So, four-person is higher than three-person. So, there's a tax credit compliance piece to that as well. So, probably more frequently than a typical apartment community, we're actually having to do property compliance audits. And so, through that process, we would also likely pick up on whether there is, you know, a number of folks, children or whatnot in a bedroom that shouldn't be.
Okay. Another question. You mentioned your traffic engineering study by Roanoke City Traffic Department. So, I, as a developer, usually have that done prior to I come to a rezoning. Why have you not done that ahead of time?
So, when we originally requested the rezoning, it was actually a request for a proffer amendment, and there was no expectation that a traffic impact analysis would be required. We're just over the burden, so I think it's 100 trips per day is what triggers the requirement. Based on Roanoke City's analysis, we're going to come out at about 103 or 104, and sorry, I say trips per day, peak hour trips. We're going to come out just over that threshold. So, based on our initial conversations, traffic impact analysis wasn't necessary, because the burden we're adding is really 31 units when considering. So, it is a comparison of 185 to 216. That said, you know, we are, we've scoped that, I'd say beyond what would typically be scoped, and we'll be working through that with site planning. And obviously, we're not going to be given an entrance on the city's roads if we can't come to some kind of an agreement with them on our traffic impact analysis, whether that's a requirement for improvements or retiming of the signal, or changing up our ingress egress pattern on Peters Creek.
So, it looks like on the GIS map on Cove Road, you have enough room to put a right turn into the project, correct?
So, we've got what I call a soft turn on both sides. So, because of the grade and because of the way that CVS is laid out, so CVS actually does not have a right turn either, but we're going to be kind of setting back our curve. And there is what I call a gradual on both sides, kind of a V into the property that will, in effect, act as a right turn. Now, that is something that will definitely be studied during the traffic impact, whether a right turn is necessary, as well as what that might mean for our kind of pedestrian improvements that we've got planned along Cove Road.
Okay. So, back to the access road next to CVS. So, have you thought about talking to your neighbor to the east or west about acquiring a little more sliver of land?
We have not, and I think that we do reach out to neighbors. CVS, their BMP is on that side, and so we would ultimately be impacting their BMP. On the, the houses on the north side, we've not looked into that. It's something we can definitely, we can definitely do. Again, we, I'm sure you know, as a developer, is sometimes trickier when you get multiple sellers into the mix. This is all being sold by a local group, Fralin and Waldrin, to us, and so we're excited to work with them. And, you know, ultimately, we had actually originally considered a single point of access off of Cove, and then we realized that we had enough width there to create another ingress or egress. It's definitely something we can do. You know, I can't commit that, as you know, sometimes it's hard to, you know, they might realize that we have to have it, which, you know, all traffic engineers say we don't, and then they can really hold out on us. So, I don't want to commit to that, but it's definitely a conversation we'd be happy to have with the, I guess, nine parcel owner.
Okay. And one other comment, you know, I'm hearing that you're targeting this toward bus drivers, schoolteachers, retail employees, firefighters, construction workers. This, this sounds like normal job, normal people, not. This, this sounds like normal job, normal people, not, I don't see high crime.
No, and, you know, we, I think it takes, because we all hear the horror stories of Section Eight, which is, I'm sure what a lot of people are thinking this is. Section Eight is HUD paying for the resident's rent, and the resident pays next to nothing or nothing for their rent. Section Eight is going away basically because the federal government and state governments have recognized that it does create these public housing complexes that are sources of crime, depress property values in the area, and can also put a huge burden on the schools and just the municipality overall. This is not that. This is really targeted housing for people that live in the county. And again, you know, we've heard from folks that are schoolteachers or are bus drivers or work here in county administration. And I think, you know, again, this is housing for them, and I don't say that to sound coy, but it really is. I mean, it's housing for folks that live here in the county. We're not expecting, you know, an influx of 216 new residents. It's residents that right now look for an affordable apartment, and as you mentioned, they don't sound like high-crime residents. And I'd also say $780 a month doesn't sound like a super affordable rent for a one-bedroom apartment if somebody is moving in as a, as a single renter. So I think that's really the big, the big point is, they'll be paying the rent, they'll be going through our background checks and credit checks, and ultimately if they can't pay the rent, then they'll have to move on, and we'll find a tenant that can.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I got one more I'd like to ask to Mr. Thompson to step up for a second. Mr. Thompson, before we open the public hearing, we've got several people that want to talk, I just want to make sure, right now, the, they have, the owners have by right to construct 185 units on that property?
Correct.
And they don't have to go through a traffic study, correct? Through us?
Through us, no.
Okay.
Through the city they may.
Okay.
All right. So let's just talk about, you raised, so, you know, when we have applications that come before us, we did, we have a pre-application meeting, and we talked about the traffic study. As you mentioned, they already had 185. So what we looked at is, it was an increase of 185 to 216, which is a 31 increase. We didn't think that justified at the rezoning stage, going through, having that submitted. You know, we're always trying to balance development costs with, and trying to reduce that and make sure we have the information that's before you. What VDOT or the city would require, obviously, they would have to do, they have to comply with as part of their site plan process and what have you. So, but yes, they are, right now, to do 185. And what they're proposing to do is increase that to 216. And as I think it was mentioned earlier, if they had no conditions on the property, they could build their project without having to come before you, because it'd be by right.
Right.
So.
Okay. Okay, thank you for clearing that up. Okay. All right, we are going to take, before I open it up to public hearing, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and do our public hearing. Okay, we're coming back into session now. We're going to open the public hearing. I want to remind, we've got quite a few people who want to speak, I want to remind the speakers to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. I appreciate you adhering to the light. So you've got the green to get going, the yellow means you've got 30 seconds left, I think, and then red means you're done. I appreciate you adhering to that. So I will first, I've got a list here. I'll first start off with Joseph Eric Orange.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. As you stated, it's Eric Orange, 5553 Heather Hill. I live on the opposite side of North Lakes from where the proposed development will be. I'm actually not here tonight to speak in support of or opposition of this project. I just wanted to share some information that I have, and I just want to make sure that I clearly understand what's being presented by Lawson. I'm all for affordable housing. I think it's important for individuals to have a place that they can call home and rest their heads, but also understand the concerns that have been voiced by some of my fellow neighbors and citizens. So I just wanted to share some numbers I had here and just make sure that I'm accurately understanding what's being proposed. The first thing I want to speak to is crime statistics. I noticed on a slide there, it stated that there's not an increase in crime statistics. Now, I don't know if they're based not on a national average, but I pulled local numbers, and based on local numbers, we do see a difference between developed housing, such as an apartment complex, as opposed to what we see in multifamily developments like North Lakes. Based on the numbers, I pulled numbers for a six-month period ending in November. Roanoke City's numbers reflect that North Ridge Apartments, which is the closest possible comparison, it's literally across the street from where this development would take place, they have roughly 200 housing units in that period of time. They have certain standards for what's reported publicly. It includes larcenies, thefts, vandalism, assaults, crimes of that type of nature. During that period of time, that six-month period, they saw eight crimes that would fall into those categories reported at North Ridge Apartments. In the same period of time for North Lake subdivision, which I believe has roughly 800 homes, so four times as many homes, they experienced 17 of those crimes. So if you break the numbers down into a 200-resident comparison, then what you're seeing is per 200 homes, you're seeing 4.25 crimes committed in North Lakes as opposed to eight crimes committed in North Ridge Apartments. So it's nearly double the crime rate if you look at it on that, and that's a local comparison. And I just wanted to share those numbers. The other thing that I wanted to point out here is, I know there was reference to income rate, but I didn't hear any specific numbers shared. So just based on what I saw, Roanoke County's household median income is roughly $68,000. Roanoke City is $44,000, and the city of Salem is $50,000. That median breaks down to $54,000. So if you use those three and factor in your numbers, the median income is actually $14,000 a year less than what the average county household has. Then if you take that, 60% of that, it brings you down to $32,400. Well, as we all know, you all as a board voted not too long ago to increase starting salaries for county public safety, and many areas, many jurisdictions locally have done the same. And so $32,000 is a far cry from what the average teacher, police officer, firefighter, deputy sheriff makes. They're making roughly in the $40,000 range. So based on those numbers, the average teacher, police officer, firefighter, or police, deputy sheriff would not qualify to live in these homes, as previously stated. So I just wanted to point out those facts, and I appreciate you all's time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker I have is Kim McLaughlin.
Hello, I'm Kim McLaughlin at 4900 Shadow Lane. That puts me right there in Skowloon Lakes. My concern is traffic. We've all talked about it, but as a former VDOT employee, I've seen the worst. And I know we had a lane, well, lane closure on Peters Creek Road, and I've seen accidents there already. If we get more traffic, which this unit, these many units you're talking about, that's more cars. And with the egress problem, there's going to be people trying to evade that intersection from the apartments, as well as people coming down Peters Creek Road from Roanoke, or coming up over Cove Road from both ends. That is either from St. Elias or from the cemetery on the Roanoke County side. I've seen people come through North Lakes to evade the congestion. And what I'm seeing, what I'm afraid of is people coming out of that apartment complex knowing they have to turn right on Cove Road going up over the hill, and they're going to come in on Green Ridge, turn right on Twilight, then go up to North, to North Lakes, go back down to the light on Peters Creek Road. That's going to be inevitable. People are going to find it. And this is a residential area, it's not a, what the VDOT would call a feeder route. And it's going to happen, even with 185 units or 216 units. And to estimate the gentleman there about cars in an apartment complex, I used to live 47 years ago at what used to be called King's Arms, which is now the apartment complex over the hill from the intersection. We had three vehicles, and we were entry-level work. We had a small business, a small farm, we were, and I was working in a factory. Three vehicles. That's probably going to happen there at this new unit. There's going to be more cars than what is predicted. So all I'm saying is that we're going to have to consider that, egress, diversion of traffic through residential areas, and that enters people walking their dogs, riding their bikes. It's a real concern for us at North Lakes, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Terry Armstrong. Next speaker is Teri Armstrong.
Can you hear me okay? If I leave my mask on? Okay, Teri Armstrong, four eight two two, Shadow Lane in North Lake subdivision, two four zero one nine. Thank you for hearing me today. I just wanted to express my personal concerns. I'm just representing myself as a resident of North Lake subdivision. Excuse me, let me grab my glasses. Over the entire project, and maybe all of this isn't appropriate to speak on here, but I did want to speak on it, it seems like there's been very little consideration given to the residents of the area, North Lake subdivision, the private residences on Green Ridge and Cove Road. And I'd like to highlight five key points of specific concern for you to consider, although I believe the gentleman may have addressed some of those today. The first is school capacity. I don't know where those numbers he's quoting about the capacity of the schools came from, but what I looked at on your website that was submitted, that's based on a two thousand and sixteen study, and I would really like to see more information based upon a current study. I tried to call the county to get that information. I could not get it myself. I'm a little disturbed by the inconsistency in the information that was shared in the letter sent to us and the maps, and what was disclosed in the planning commission, the difference between the three-story and the four-story, which they talked about today. They mentioned a pool today. That was not in the information provided to us. So, I feel like we don't have a full understanding of what is going on there. Safety services in the county are stretched thin, police, fire, and rescue, and I think it's putting the current residences at undue risk to not only put any kind of complex in, but a complex that is being proposed to increase the number of units, which is just gonna be more people. I think that's undue stress on our public services, and I think it's putting the current residences of that area at undue risk. I have very serious concerns about the traffic concerns, as the gentleman before me spoke about. People walk and ride bikes on Cove Road. If you add two or three hundred additional cars, I can't imagine what it's gonna be like. Traffic backs up through that intersection all the time, where somebody wants to make a left turn into the Hardee's off of Cove Road, and it backs up across the intersection. That is also a diversion. When there's an accident on Interstate eighty-one, those trucks take our exit onto Peters Creek Road to go through Salem and get back on eighty-one further north. And that's a huge backup with what we have now. And then lastly, the buffers are a concern between the commercial rental property that they're proposing and the residential area, not only backing up to candlelight, but to the homes. And I don't think those have been properly considered, and I don't think we have sufficient information based upon what was provided to us. And also, the information that's on these maps is almost unreadable. It's so small, even with a magnifying glass. So, I just feel like we need more information, and those things need to be considered. I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I think I went over.
Next speaker is Nancy Hughes. Thank you. Next speaker is Leon Melton.
Leon Melton, fifty-one forty-eight Basin Park Drive, North Lakes. I second what this gentleman spoke about, about the traffic problems. That is my concern. I think these guys did a good job explaining everything, but I think they're missing it by not having an exit and an entry level off of Peters Creek with the exit onto Cove Road. That's gonna be, if they try to make a left turn, if I was a resident in that complex, that's gonna be a headache at eight o'clock in the morning trying to make a left turn on the Cove Road, period. That needs to be addressed, the issue of entrance and exit on Cove Road especially. And I think they really are missing Peters Creek where you do need a dual exit, entrance and exit, I should say. And the last thing, I haven't heard anybody mention, and maybe somebody can answer this, but with additional students, would the bus stop be on Cove Road, or would it be in the apartment complex? And I haven't heard that addressed at all. That's a concern. If it's on Cove Road right there, that's pretty close to traffic coming up from the light, and that could be an issue. But that's all I have. Thank you for your time, and for these gentlemen for explaining everything. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next speaker I have is Justin Sherry.
Hello, my name's Justin Sherry, five one six four Whippledale Avenue. I am part of North Lakes community. A couple of things I would just like to talk about is the quality of life. Having such a large complex in such a small area, and, you know, talking about traffic and everything else, it comes down to the fact that there are eight to ten other apartment complexes in the area that are comparable amenities, comparable price range. So, why are we adding another apartment complex in an area that is essentially, majority of it is compressing the area into something that I do not want someone living twenty feet off of a property line? If I'm going to walk out of my apartment, because teachers, I'm a teacher, and other residents, twenty feet off to have a, you know, property buffer with a fence in line, twenty feet off your back deck is not a lot of room. That's from me to you. That's more like twenty-five feet. So, quality of life being there, who is going to want to live in an area that is so small and compact? Specifically Bent Creek Apartments, they have three pools, they have basketball courts, they have tennis courts, and a one-bedroom apartment is seven hundred and fifty dollars. And that is less than three point eight miles away, and there are apartments open right now for rent. So, essentially, we have to go and look at is, are we maximizing our tax dollars for this property? What kind of tax revenue are we gonna generate from tax subsidy housing? If we put townhomes there, or something that had more property value, then we could draw more tax revenue from it. Essentially, the hotels on Third Lane are also considered, you know, essentially, people were living there, and the amount of foot traffic that went up and down Peters Creek was there. Sorry, I'm kinda everywhere with this. Just the fact that eight to ten other apartment complexes in the area, if we put townhomes in there, slow down the growth of essentially putting ten pounds of apartments in an eight-pound complex, I think would pretty much ease this whole situation. Affordable housing is needed. Housing crisis in this area is needed, but essentially, increasing the numbers is not gonna solve everything. They even, you know, the Lawson Group even said so themselves. It's a good start, but increasing forty units in this area is not essentially gonna save anybody's, anybody a headache. There are other areas and there's other places in the area that we could be better invested. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Danny Goad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Danny Goad. I reside at forty-seven sixty-six Reed Mountain Road in Cloverdale. I'm speaking on behalf of my mother and my father, Harland and Corinne Goad, who own adjacent property, and they reside at fifty seventy-five Cove Road. I don't think the county has done their due diligence in approving this project or considering this project. When we were at the planning commission last week, only three members were present. The representative from the Catawba district was not here. And in the presentation, we heard it again tonight, it appears as no consideration at all has been given to the people on the south side of the development, southwest side of the development. The concern seems to be North Lakes and where the development is very close to a residence and to a three-unit apartment building right behind it. And within, there's a well right on the property line there that's very much at risk of being disturbed, and another one about forty feet away from the property line. A lot of things have changed since nineteen eighty-four. They've opened up the road between, or four nineteen to the extension of Green Ridge Road. That's not something that Roanoke County probably had a part in. But the residents of Roanoke County pay the price for it with the heavy traffic, people shortcutting off of Melrose and Peters Creek and taking the shortcut through there. As has already been mentioned, there's three times that traffic is really heavy. Just this past week, it was backed up to Green Ridge Road from Peters Creek, and any, twice a day, in the morning and the evening, it's backed up beyond the crest of the hill. And when, anytime eighty-one's backed up, that's a shortcut that everyone takes. It seems like from the planning commission that there, it had almost been a done deal. But my biggest thing, and there's been no mention of this, the density is actually increasing thirty-six percent. While the number of units has gone up to two sixteen, the amount of land that is there has dropped by more than two acres. And so, there are very significant changes that have occurred since eighty-four. There's a huge amount of traffic issues there at Hardee's, CVS. I would encourage you all to drive through there at some point and see how difficult it is to try to get out of the Hardee's parking lot, because the other, this entrance, or ingress or egress, whichever one you have there on Cove Road, they're not gonna be able to see CVS, and they're not gonna be able to see the guy coming out of Hardee's either, and you're really creating a terrible problem by having access there on Cove Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Goad. I bet you're related.
My name is David Goad. I reside at fifty seventy-one Cove Road, which is right next to where they're gonna be building the complexes. The one thing that's already been mentioned that we have concern is the well. We use that well, and, you know, water's the most important thing to have in life. So, you know, we always hear about developments and things that are going on and the environmental part of it, so that should be a great consideration, even though if it's two or three families, that's two or three families. And I think we've been overlooked in this presentation, and I voiced that at the last meeting. Also, I have a concern with, I don't believe there's gonna be a fence that goes to Cove Road, and what you're gonna have, if this is pet-friendly, you're gonna have people going off into the woods over into these properties if there's not some kind of a barrier put there. The third thing is traffic that's been talked about, and one thing I'd like to know is how many parking places that we have there at the, or is projected at that apartment complex. And the traffic today, I went up to the food line and just sat there, and I counted the number of cars that it took to get through the light, and it was fifteen cars could get through that light. There's approximately twenty-five cars that will back up to our driveway, not to mention over the hill. So, if you're going to Green Ridge Road, you're well over fifty cars, maybe sixty. Okay, if you're gonna allow fifteen cars are gonna go through that light, there's about eleven or twelve cars that's gonna be backed up into where you pull out of the apartment complex onto Cove Road. And so, let's say that you have fifteen cars go. You've got fifteen more coming as soon as they get through there and the light turns red. So, how in the world can we say that this is gonna be safe and gonna be able to allow this to take place? Because it's gonna be, you know, I don't want the blood on my hands of not sitting, standing up here and speaking about it, because somebody's gonna get hurt through this building. And to me, if I was gonna build something, and I knew that there were gonna be a problem with traffic, I would've already done the studies or had, or spoke out more about what they're gonna do. I've lived over there, over forty years. I graduated from Northside High School. The traffic's been bad for years, and can you tell me that a traffic pattern change at the light, that nobody could figure that out in forty years? Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Robin Goad, Roland Elder.
Elder. I'd like to re-put the map back for a second, if you don't mind. Can you do that, please?
Which one?
Of the property, just the project.
The concept from the petition?
Like, that's right here on the computer.
Okay.
If you don't mind, please. I live at five zero seven one Cove Road, next door to my parents. And that house that you see, right there in that plot four of land, that Mr. Thompson referred to as dilapidated, is the home where I've raised my six children. For twelve years as a single mom, I've lived in that house for about ten years, and I grew up in the house next door with my two awesome brothers back there. The house is not dilapidated, just to clarify. It is a farmhouse, and it's beautiful. It has lots of character, and a lot of memories and love are in that home, and I know that that's probably not relevant to why we're here today. But I too graduated from Northside in nineteen eighty-four, when all of this was approved, and my six children, well, five of them have graduated. I have one left to graduate. So, my concerns are, of course, the traffic. I'll tell you about a little story where my daughter, who's nineteen now, she was almost run over at our bus stop, which is at the end of our driveway, because the traffic is so bad. But thank God, he protected her that day. So, I don't know how you guys are gonna plan to make it happen, to make it safe for those kids crossing that busy street. But I have a heart of a mom, so that's my concern there, safety. Correction from Mr. Lawson on the CVS does have a right-hand lane to turn into, a very skinny, small lane, but it is a turn lane. It's very short, but there is a turn lane there at the CVS. If you come off of Peters Creek, there is a very short turn lane. So, I'm not sure how that got missed. And as far as the number, as far as schools go, you know, I don't know how you guys come up with your numbers, but right now, the schools are very understaffed. They are paying pretty good for substitute teachers that don't even have a degree because of this understaffing. So, maybe those numbers need to be adjusted a little bit for the jobs that are, the positions that are needed to be filled at the schools, 'cause there's a lot of substitute teachers working a lot of hours. I have a lot of friends that are part, that are, they're subs, and they are working a lot because of the understaffing. One of my concerns, too, is, when y'all were talking about the trash, is how much noise is that gonna produce when the trash truck comes in to empty the trash? Those big, you know, slamming the cans down, wait, you know, that's a noise disturbance. We can hear when they, when the dumpster is emptied over its sheets. So, especially this time of year where the foliage is not as, you know, is not as full. So, that's a concern for me. But the traffic, y'all, I did videotape the traffic at four o'clock when I was trying to get out of my driveway. I had to come back through after my delivery, and at five o'clock, it wasn't any better. It was raining, and there was, there was almost an accident in front of me and stuff like that. So, that is, that is a huge, huge issue. So that is, that is a huge, huge issue. My well right on the back of the property there, that's our water source. We got to have it. So I just, I just appeal to you today to oppose this project for, for very logical reasons, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more?
I don't have any more.
Okay.
I'm up. Do you have?
I think we've got two more.
I'm Christina Cooper. I live at forty-seven ninety-one Lantern Street. I'm at the top of the Beacon Ridge subdivision, just north over the Provost property. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring to attention. Again, everybody has talked about the traffic. I don't think anybody has talked about the wildlife. I know that it was part of the Planning Commission concerns. I witnessed the day that I got the notice that this was going to be taking place. Two deer going into that forest. They're constant. We have gotten a great increase in North Lakes ever since the Woodhaven Industrial Park destroyed that woods. We've seen a great increase in North Lakes of deer, fox. Everything imaginable has come through. I walk my dog every day through this neighborhood. I do know that the risks of the traffic, we don't have sidewalks, we don't have lights. So it is a danger to walk every day, but I do. I do have concerns that that's going to be an increased risk to my safety and safety of my neighbors. Everybody does walk their dogs. Everybody walks through the neighborhood. Kids ride their bikes. It is a very suburban area, and I am concerned about the increase in traffic and, and population. Something else, looking at the Roanoke County two hundred plan, I just wanted to see if there was anything addressed in that plan for Peters Creek. Peters Creek does have the most calls for fire, EMS, and police services. We know that those are already stretched, so there are concerns about an increase in population. Also, there is a significant flood plain in that area. There has been loss of property in years past at Peters Creek and Cove Road. So if there's any concerns about that construction adding to that danger, as well as the crash site. So that is one of the most increased places is that intersection. So those are already been made aware of in the Roanoke County plan, so I just wanted to see if those would be addressed as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then I have a last speaker, Vanessa Hickson.
Thank you for hearing all of our concerns, and we appreciate the board's time tonight. I'm Vanessa Hickson, five five one one Twilight Road, as you all heard, is the cut-through road into North Lakes that handles a lot of the congestion, which I foresee increasing, obviously. I've lived in that community for twenty-three years, and over that time, I have seen the addition of the Roanoke County Public Safety Building and Services, which is on Cove Road, which will have to access down that long stretch of road. And we will have police officers sitting in that line of traffic, too, because I've sat behind them, just pointing that out. Additionally, in addition to the two hundred unit complex that's been there forever, we have the retreat, which is two hundred and fifty-eight units. And now we are proposing another two hundred and eighteen units, all within a two-mile radius of each other, to come through one of the highest-traffic, probably backed-up, small intersections in the city, aside from Elm Avenue. Everybody talks about traffic. Roanoke really doesn't have traffic. They don't have LA traffic, but Buddy Peters Creek can get, and Cove Road can get pretty backed up. I guess the most disconcerting thing I've heard here tonight is the lack of planning for some type of relief on behalf of the contractors, you know, to see if we can't make adjustments, the egress, the ingress, heck, talk to the neighbors. They might sell you a little bit of property, you know, to make that turn lane. So I think, you know, that, that's just concerning overall. I think a, a traffic study in advance of this project certainly would have been worth the time and effort for a forty-three million dollar project. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we done, clerk?
I believe so.
Okay. So at this time, I will close the public hearing. And usually, we allow the petitioner to come back up and have comments after the, the public has spoken, to answer some of those concerns and questions. And then the board will follow up with questions also. Go ahead.
So Frederick Fletcher, thirty-one twenty-four Cooper's Arch, Virginia Beach, Virginia. So first, I really appreciate all the community comments. I think, I don't know if this group was told, but we had tried to set up a community meeting. And the community meetings over the last six weeks, leading up to our Planning Commission, were being absorbed with, I don't know if Mr. Thompson may be able to speak to that, but we're being absorbed with other county business. And so we were unable to host a community meeting, and we're excited about this public forum. So appreciate the comments. If there's any ones that I miss, as I try to answer these, please let me know. So speaking about the school numbers, you know, again, full transparency, it was a twenty-sixteen Roanoke County Public School study. However, you know, that's the best we have to work with, and if those are even close to holding, we should have plenty of capacity. We all agree that that's, you know, critical importance and the capacity constraints we might have from teachers. That's something that is, hopefully, landowners and, you know, property owners here in Roanoke County we'd be concerned with as well. But we should have time, hopefully, to address that, and that's not something that we, as the Lawson Companies, can address fully. On the, on the traffic concerns, one thing that was brought up, I think, was the trucks off Interstate eighty-one. And that was actually something that was included in our scoping. So we will have to, part of our testing will require that we look at, or test when, because VDOT actually does traffic counts when trucks are routed off eighty-one. It's one of their emergency access routes to go through Salem, and that is part of our scoping. So we will catch that because I would imagine that, that probably is, is a pretty critical point to, to measure that. The entrance and exit off of Peters Creek, I think that's something that we would love to do, have both. And we're going to try our best, and I can't say much more than that. I think we will try our best because ultimately it will benefit our residents to have an ingress and an egress there, and it will alleviate traffic concerns and ultimately likely require us to do fewer turn lanes elsewhere. So if we can do that, we'll do it. I'll commit to that. On the bus stop, that's a great question and something that I believe the county public schools would probably work with us on. We would love a bus stop on-site. One thing that wasn't mentioned was there is actually a bus stop, a public bus stop, not for the schools, but there's a bus stop nearby. And, you know, that is something that we hope reduces our transportation load that we're adding to the property. The, the, speaking of, of kind of cars, and I understand, you know, not all apartment complexes are the same, and also, you know, what was true in the eighties and nineties may not be true today. Based on what we're seeing, we are at peak parking and we run about one point four cars per unit. I think the county minimums are about one point seven five, which would put us somewhere in the three hundred and seventy plus or minus parking space range. However, that is overparked by our standard. We see on urban communities, we're at one-to-one, in the city of Richmond, on the majority of our properties, similarly in Norfolk. And then suburban communities, one and a quarter to one point three five is what we're actually running at. And so I just wanted to make sure we were addressing that. The, a couple other items, we did review, and I apologize, I am unfamiliar with the Bink Creek apartment, so I can't speak to that one. But North Ridge, which is, I think, built in the seventies, is a two-bedroom and a unit, which is two-bedroom and one and a half bath, is about two hundred dollars more. And I think, hopefully, you'll agree, once this is built out, a much lower, just it's older. And so we've, we will have a higher quality product at a, at a much lower rent level. I just wanted to point that out, as far as kind of the nearest comp. I know we've spoken about retreat a lot. I think somebody referenced motels up road, up the road are acting as affordable housing. I mean, ultimately, that's really why we're here. That's really not supposed to be affordable housing. It's not probably the best land use for those motels. And then it's ultimately not conducive for the families in the area. One of the biggest impacts on childhood development is the number of moves that, that kids have. And we find that our residents are actually with us upwards of three, four, or five years. And so because of that, you're not moving kids while they're at those critical development stages. So I just, I wanted to make sure that was touched on. The fencing, I think the only place that won't be fenced, and just to, again, to make this clear, and I don't know if it's possible to pop this back up again, but the only place that we would expect not to fence would be the frontage along Cove Road, which is where we'll have sidewalk. Pets, our aluminum fencing is about, you know, I think, four to six inches, the pickets are apart, so it would have to be a really small animal to, to move through there. So we would expect the fencing to take care of those concerns. And we also, we do allow dogs, however, it's not shown on here. Typically, depending upon the market, we would have some sort of a small dog park area, as you see a lot of, of properties. And just a, a couple other ones, the flooding, our EMS controls compared to anything that could be built here, and frankly, compared to what is here today, which is, is vacant, will be, require us to retain twenty-five percent more than the county minimum, but also twenty-five percent more than what's currently coming onto the site. So right now, you have, it comes onto the site, some sheet flows and some goes into the ground. We'll have to retain underground more than what's there. So we feel very confident we'll have these large concrete vaults, basically, that go underneath our parking lot, and that will assist in that. And then the last was the EMS, fire, and police calls, something I probably missed. As Roanoke County, or Roanoke City will actually be doing the traffic really review, and the, the county will do more of a cursory review, they're actually, the city's going to send that out to all their departments. Based on our location, it's, it's actually possible that we're serviced by some of the city's emergency services. And so with that, their departments will review. So whether that's police, fire, EMS, they'll actually be brought into that planning review process through the city's transportation team. And then, oh, the last one, the well at the corner of the property there, we are, admittedly, we have not worked around a lot of wells. We just don't have them down in Crystal, Virginia as frequently, or not wells that are used for true water. And I spoke with our engineer of the day after the Planning Commission. There's steps that can be done for well protection, which we'll definitely undertake, because anything that happens, if we damage, whether it's, we don't even have to enter the property. If we were to damage their well in any way, we're liable and responsible for that. And, you know, that is another one where we will be on the hook for that and, and have to, you know, figure out a way to repair that well. But that said, there's a number of well-protection techniques. We should be below them at that portion, so we won't see overflow. And I think the only other concern would be any kind of subterranean work we might be doing adjacent to the well. And we work adjacent to a lot of pretty critical pieces of infrastructure in various cities and counties, and we've got a lot of different construction methods for making sure that we're not, you know, impacting, whether it's an underground stormwater system, a waterline, or a property owner's well. So that is something that we take seriously. It was on the phone the next day because that was a, a complete new one for us. So want to rest assured that that will hopefully be, you know, we will not have any issues there. And then in the worst-case scenario that we do, we'll obviously rectify that quickly. That's, those are the ones that I think I caught, but I'm happy to answer any remaining questions.
Mr. North, you want to go first?
Yeah. I took about sixteen notes on different things and went back over them and did a cursory review. Fifty percent were road issues. We're trying to put a, a new complex without addressing the road issues. I'm going to tell you this. In my time on this board of supervisors, I've gotten more complaints from citizens about roads because things were built and they weren't addressed with respect to roads, both commercial as well as residential. If you build it, you don't address the road issues on the front end, they will aggravate our staff until the end of time. So in my personal opinion, you are better to do it right on the front end than for us, it's staff in Roanoke County, to have to put up with it. Because we're the ones that get the phone calls, and it absorbs countless time away from handling other things. Do it right before you do it wrong and wish you hadn't done it right. And I don't care who does the traffic study. I don't care if it's VDOT, Roanoke City, a consultant. You better listen to their recommendations, and if you don't think you're comfortable with it, then you better get a consultant to give you recommendations on what needs to be done with the roadways, the ingress and the egress, because that area is congested today. Now, we'd love to have, you know, more housing if it's needed, and there is a study that was done, we're a thousand, thousand homes short in the Roanoke region. I asked for the study to be done by the Roanoke Valley Allegating Regional Commission, and so we need to do so. And what's putting pressure today on prices, we all know, is inflation and, and housing prices as well. So, you know, folks today that have jobs that don't make but forty-five, fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars a year, and they work hard, I think affordable housing, like you're suggesting, is good. So while I, I understand your intent, I just, I must tell you this. Do it right on the front end with respect to the transportation piece. If it takes you two more years to address that before you start the bulldozers moving the dirt. If you do not, you know, you're going to be facing criticism, and we are as well. And that's all I'm going to say on it, because I don't want to ever have to say, I told you so. Because I am telling you right now, it will be a problem.
Yes, sir.
And, and until I feel comfortable about the transportation piece and how it's being addressed, it's, I'm going to be hard-pressed to, you know, clap my hands and say, let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. North. Martha, I've got a few things, and I'm going to let you wrap it up, okay?
Sure.
So I, I wrote the same thing, Mr. North, and most of it was transportation, but there were a couple of, couple of things that the residents said that didn't quite jive. One said subsidized. Now, I didn't hear you say this is a subsidized project, correct?
That's correct. And so the way the proffer is written today says government subsidy. The, the government subsidy, and the way that most people think of it, is subsidy that runs through the renter and then is ultimately paid to us, so the renter's not really paying their rent. The way the Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program works is we are required, we set our, we reserve our rents and incomes at a certain level, sixty percent of the area median income, and then we receive tax credit. So there is, and this is where we got caught up, and, and doing the, the proffer review, there is a tax credit that comes from the federal government to the developer, but that never comes into the hand of the resident. And that's why, again, we wanted to come in, in front of you all to address that. And I think that, hopefully, that's, that's been clear, but please ask away questions there, because we're, you know, I want to make sure that's absolutely clear on that point.
Okay. I got that. Okay. So the first speaker said that a police officer making forty-two thousand dollars or sheriff could not afford...
Wouldn't be eligible.
Wouldn't be eligible.
So, and, and I'll, so the area median income, and it may be the geographic differences, and so you just have to make sure you're taking into account the way that the federal government, and ultimately the housing authority, who we have to comply with, calculates it. It's seventy-eight thousand, four hundred dollars is the area median for Roanoke County.
Is that household?
That's household. So that's a four-person household. It, it changes. So if you're a one-person household, that will adjust up or down based on the number of, of folks in the house. Sixty percent of that is forty-seven thousand and forty dollars. So if you are a married couple with a stay-at-home mom and two kids, and the husband is a police officer, the, the wife is the police officer, then you, you would qualify. If you're an entry-level police officer... If you're an entry-level police officer, and also when you take averages of salaries, you're getting the most tenured employees and the new employees. So, you know, we've really focused on the newer employees that would likely be starting. But if you did have a more tenured person, you know, they do have to have a family. If they're making $45,000, $50,000 a year and they're trying to rent a one-bedroom as a single resident, then they would not qualify. Because right now, that income limit for a one-person household looking for a one-bedroom is $32,940. And then it steps up as you increase the person count, the household size. So two people is 37, or 37,680. Three people is 42, 360. And then four people is 47, 40. Those numbers go up each year, we get AMI increases. And then again, if that person does, you know, they come in and they're early in their career and they start making more, they will not be kicked out, they'll be welcomed. And, you know, we, there's no impact to them. So, you know, them doing a good job and making more money is great, and that's what we want to see.
Okay, all right. Martha, that's all I have.
Paul may have questions before me.
Are we, I have no questions of the applicant or of staff, but are we going to have a discussion or comment at the board, or are we at that now?
I'll ask a few questions.
Okay, go ahead.
If the chair pleases.
I'd like to make a few comments at the end, but I have no questions of the applicant.
So I have just a couple of questions that have, I don't think, been addressed. And I'm going to kind of peruse my notes as I, as I look through it real quickly. I know someone mentioned something about a pool. They thought you had said something about, is the complex going to have a pool? It's not shown, but maybe the clubhouse.
I don't think I worked any magic. Thank you for that. Behind the clubhouse, on the clubhouse deck, right now it's probably labeled, well, it's labeled as clubhouse, but there would be an amenity area. We like outdoor amenity areas. Sometimes it's a pool. Here we have the budget dollars for a pool. We like to do that given the number of residents. But we're also seeing more, you know, fire pit and grill-in stations, usually some sort of a pergola and outdoor area. So that would be in our plans. And we typically find that, you know, helps, you know, us lease the property and also makes it a nicer place to live.
I did not realize that that, the school numbers, I think that I may have even forwarded those numbers to you. And I didn't realize that those were 2016 numbers. What I would say is that, you know, with the pandemic and everything, unfortunately, our school numbers have actually decreased. So I don't think that it would show that there was less capacity, but probably more. And so I wanted to set that straight real quickly. I too have really serious concerns about the traffic and I have some commentary. And maybe I should go straight into my commentary now.
Okay, so are we done with the...
I think so.
Okay.
I think so. If I have additional questions, I'll pull you up. I just wanted to go into some commentary and then I'll make a motion. And then after that motion, if the chair pleases, there could be additional discussion.
That's fine, yeah.
I want to say thank you, first of all, for a very good presentation. And appreciate your demeanor and how that you're answering our questions. And I do wish that we could have had a community meeting. And I'm going to follow up with a suggestion shortly on that. But we do need affordable housing in this area. I mean, we have, the need has been proven. I hear that it's going to accommodate those in the beginning salary range, taken into for a household income of approximately $48,000 with that 30% of the median income. I understand that there's pedestrians on Cove Road. I don't, I think that that sounds scary to me, because I have traveled Cove Road and it scares me. I've been on it when I've had to sit through the light multiple times. I think because of the other apartment complexes, the cemetery, some of the traffic that comes from the public safety center, that it is a very heavily trafficked area. And I think that's been documented and discussed almost ad nauseam with most every speaker, because it's seen as a huge concern. And there is a very short response time when people are pulling out of, say, the cemetery or the other apartment complexes, just because of the way Cove Road works. And so I think there are some real concerns here. I'm going to be all over the place in my commentary, because I was just making notes as I was hearing them. We need more students for our school to raise the ADM, because that increases funding and that helps with some of our school needs. Measures for stormwater management are highly regulated. So I understood what you were saying about the property actually being required to capture. And you were saying that you all are even required to go beyond that in those minimum standards. We're working hard to increase our public safety staff. It's a concern that I still have, an overarching concern. The Sheetz, Hardee's, CVS, that intersection gives me great concern. There's been some discussion about coming into the complex from Peters Creek and from Cove. Another concern that I have is people coming, traveling east on Cove Road and they live in this new apartment complex. And they might have to wait through several light cycles to be able to turn left to go home. And I don't think I've heard that discussed. I think I'm ready to move to a motion, Mr. Chairman, if that's appropriate.
Yes.
So with what I have, so what I have heard is that there is some, some valid concerns with traffic. I've personally seen it. I appreciate the fact that you're going through this traffic study. And I would like to be able to see that traffic study. And much like Mr. North said, it really needs to be handled with care. And because of that, I find that the required information for the submitted proposal is incomplete. I therefore move to delay action until additional necessary materials are submitted to the Board of Supervisors. And I would say that that additional necessary material would be the traffic study to see that it merits this, these additional units. So that is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. And now I'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go back to the beginning of where we started this two hours ago. All this is, is an attempt to clean up what is, at least in my opinion, a very problematical proffer that, in my opinion, violates the Federal Fair Housing Act and Virginia Fair Housing Act. And that's all we're really trying to do. This property has been rezoned. Whether it's 185 or 216 units, we can argue and debate over that. But the bottom line is, this is consistent with our comprehensive plan. It's transition, it meets, it touches all the bases. It satisfies our zoning ordinance. I have a hard time denying something that meets our comprehensive plan and satisfies our zoning ordinance. I do have a problem with, at least it has been our custom or our practice, when we have had an application like this and others, we have had a traffic impact analysis, a TIA. So while I would, at this point, be very favorably considering approving this application, I have to agree with Supervisor Hooker that I'd really like to see the TIA. And in a more narrow, I'm not a traffic engineer. But when I first looked at this application, both when it went to the Planning Commission and now before us, I really couldn't figure out why you had a one-way in off of Peters Creek. It would just seem to me far more commonsensical to have a way out. I'm not that familiar with this part. I'm familiar with that darn intersection of Cove Road and Peters Creek. And I know it's a mess. So it seemed to me that if you had a way out on the Peters Creek, that solves a whole lot of problems. Now, I don't want to say to an applicant that the applicant has to go out and buy, I don't know what, 20 extra feet from a neighbor. I don't want to hold that applicant up and hold him hostage so that the neighbor can say, oh, yeah, I'll sell it to you for a million dollars. But I'd like to see, I'd like to see what a traffic impact analysis does. I'm very favorable to the application, I'm very favorable to the project. I think it's an excellent project. I think we need, we need affordable housing. As Supervisor North mentioned, county just went through a housing study. We have a, we have a need for this kind of housing in our community. We can argue and quibble over what school has more space or doesn't have more space. But if you look at the last decade of the Roanoke County Schools' financial reports, we've lost, what, 900 students over the last decade?
12%.
In Roanoke County? I mean, we are hemorrhaging kids. And what that means is, when our kids graduate from Roanoke County schools, they can't get jobs here. They have to leave and go someplace else. We need, we need population, we need jobs, we need economic development. So I think this is, this is a very positive project in many ways. There is a problem with traffic, and I think we have to address traffic. And I'd like to, I'd like to see, whether it's VDOT or Roanoke City's traffic engineers, I'd like to see how they address that. And from a non-traffic engineer perspective, I'd really like to see, I'd really like to see another way in and out on the Peters Creek. So I would support the motion, but I don't want to send a message, I don't want to send a false message that this is a, this is a negative, this is a negative view on my part. I think this is a good project. I think it's, there's a lot of benefits to it. I think there's a lot of benefits to it. But I think there's, there might be a better way to do it. Thank you.
Before we go to the vote, I have a question for our attorney.
Yes, sir.
You go first.
I was just wondering if the board would like to continue this indefinitely, to allow the applicant plenty of time. And once they have the traffic impact study, they could advise the clerk that they'd be ready to place it on the board's agenda, or to set a specific date, February 8th or February 22nd, so that the board could plan to hear it. I just wanted to perhaps offer that as an alternative.
Is 30 days amenable to the petitioner? Do you think that you would have all the materials from the traffic impact analysis?
I believe so.
Within 30 days?
Within, so mid-January, I just don't have...
So the date for the second meeting would be January...
I believe that would be January 25th.
January 25th. Mr. Thompson, right.
Before Mr. Thompson speaks, I just want to interject something, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
We've got the holidays. That's only two weeks, when you think about it.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's enough time.
I don't either. I think...
If this is my rodeo, I wouldn't schedule it.
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
Well, if, we can ask the petitioner. Let's make it amenable to them.
Right.
All right, a little bit of clarification. Typically, when we do require a TIA, what we require is, usually it's VDOT. And so it's not just the submittal of a TIA. Because VDOT will do its review, and in this case, the city will do its review. You want them to submit their study to the city and have the city sign off on it. So that the study that you have, and I would think they would want to, is that the city has reviewed it and approved it before it comes submitted back to you. Because otherwise, the city would have to review it and comment on it, which may not, which then may generate changes to that. So to me is, in this regard, this is what we do for VDOT, is there's a concurrence letter, I don't know what the city will do with this, that they concur with the study and they submit the letter and the traffic study at the same time. That way you know that it's been reviewed and approved by the city. So however long that may take. And that may take more than the 30 days, because somebody's reviewing that in that process.
So you think it should be more than 30 days, would be your recommendation?
Yeah, I would say that whenever they get that resubmitted, we could then schedule that. So I don't know how you want to word that.
May I ask, Mr. Fletcher, would it be amenable to you all to just make it, when you have the information, that you contact the clerk and we reschedule, just to make sure that we don't put you in a crunch where you don't have the needed materials?
No, and I appreciate that. One thing, again, just given where we're at to date, we didn't need to bring up, I don't want to sound over the top of this, we'll figure it out. We have to have site plan approval in anticipation of our application to Virginia Housing for this community. That application is in mid-March. So that is our deadline for having this fully approved. And, you know, our traffic engineers are doing traffic counts this week. So I think time is more of the essence for us, and we'll push our engineers. Once they get the counts, it's beyond that to study. The, my biggest concern, and we haven't worked with Roanoke City, so we just go to the city and their transportation engineers, is their review timeline. Because we work in places that can take a longer amount of time. So that's where I'm kind of stuck right now.
Understood.
So I would say for us, sooner is better. You know, I think if we get beyond January, we would start to get concerned.
Nervous.
Yeah.
Understood.
And I just want to add, Philip, while you're there. So if we have a study by Roanoke City, that's fine for Cove and Peters Creek. But how about all that traffic back up to 81? Who's going to do that study and tell us that's a problem? That's what I've heard, that's what I've got written here, is the traffic is back there. Who's going to study that?
Well, I agree. Well, if there's a decision on 81, the whole region has traffic issue, right? I mean...
We're talking about Cove Road. We know that the road is backing up to Green Bridge. We know the traffic is backed up.
I'd feel better, Mr. Chairman, I feel better VDOT weigh in on this. I don't care who does the study, but VDOT needs to take it and look at it and weigh in, because this is not just Peters Creek and Cove Road interchange. That Cove Road, let me tell you something. Cove Road, whenever it was built, 50 years ago, nothing's been done to it at that time. So you're going to, you're going to load up, you're going to load up more density for traffic in an area that hasn't had anything done to it. So I would like VDOT to weigh in on this, because if they don't, we're going to be haunted by this going forward.
All right, so let's back up a step. So typically, when a traffic impact analysis is done, is there is a project scoping meeting that's done, okay? The applicant and their engineers will meet with either VDOT, or in this case, the city, to go over what the scope of the traffic study will be. What intersections you're going to study, what assumptions you're going to make about the traffic. You know, there's different assumptions that you will make. What growth rate you may have to anticipate on area of traffic. You know, they do have a growth rate and so forth. So that's all set up. In this case, that's going to be done by the city to satisfy their need. We always forward our information to VDOT, right? They said that they don't control this, these streets, and therefore it would be the city that would have the say on the traffic study. Having said that, I don't know if the city's traffic study is going to do the scope that you all are looking for.
Right. So that's why, Mr. Chief, Mr. Chairman, that's why we're saying, can VDOT expand the scope of what they're doing and comment on the total picture? I think we are being, we are being narrow-minded in our review if we don't get VDOT in on the topic. The roads in the city, the state of Virginia roads in the city are maintained by the city. The roads in the county that feed this area are maintained by VDOT. We need to have that looked into. We both, two different people have taken notes that talk about the condition of Cove Road and the traffic issue today, never mind the extra density that's going to ensue from this. This goes back to what I said before. This happened on 460, it happened at West Ruethen Road. And we continue, every time we bring the subject up or talk to the public, there's always an element... the public, there's always an element that's dissatisfied with the way that was handled. I'm trying to avoid a catastrophe. This isn't even in my district because I know it's going to be problematic. So we can't, we need to get outside the box and have VDOT weigh in on this.
But it's not fair to an applicant that that applicant has to cure the problems because Virginia Tech has a football game and traffic gets on 81 and people take a shortcut. That's not fair to them. It's, they have to address their concerns and their needs, but I don't think it's their obligation to fix all the other road projects in Rono County or the Rono Valley.
Nobody said it was, Mr. Mahoney. I'm asking for a review by VDOT because the VDOT roads on Peters Creek are maintained by them, and I would like their expertise. If that's going to be an extra extension that's undue delay, then we'll just have to live with it, because I'm going to tell you what's going to happen. It's going to come back to haunt us. And I'm not suggesting the applicant pay for the study. I'm not suggesting anything outside of that. I'm suggesting that we, VDOT, who should have been here in this audience tonight listening to this, because they could have probably spoken to some of it. That's just my opinion. You know, and I know, if you don't address an issue upfront, it's going to come right back like a boomerang and hit you again upside the head.
Well, I think that's why we were suggesting ingress and egress off of Peters Creek. I mean, that's, that will avoid Cove Road immensely. Anyway, Mr. Attorney, do we have enough information to give the applicant in regards to a road traffic study? The motion that's been made, is it sufficient?
I do believe that the motion has been made, and the request for additional traffic information has been made.
Okay. All right, so clerk, call the roll. And let me repeat the motion real quick. Yes, sir.
So are we, it's indefinitely till they come back, or is it to a date specific, January?
25th, I believe it was a January date.
Is it date specific, or whenever the applicant comes back to us?
This would be, this would be my thought on this particular subject. And, Mr. Fletcher, I was, I was going to say indefinitely.
Yeah, I think we prefer the date. I mean, let's come back and, you know, we'll give you what we have. If not, it'll be a, you know, but we want to, you know, again, we're talking about timing here, so I think, we think we can at least have the study done. You know, we can't promise what VDOT or city will do, but, you know, we might have the study done, or at least preliminary traffic count, so we'll come back and do what we can. So I think we prefer the date.
You prefer the date for January 25th?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion to come back January?
25th.
25th with the traffic study with what we have. And that is the motion. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Okay.
Did we close the public hearing?
I closed, already closed our public hearing.
Yeah, I closed it. Yeah. Okay, we move to item Q, citizens' comments and communications. Clerk?
I have none.
Okay. We move to item R, reports and inquiries of board members. Mr. Mahoney?
A couple of things, Mr. Chairman. I think all of us have heavy hearts and sorrow and sadness for Mr. Peters, our chairman, and his family. I just think it's, it's hard to comprehend losing a child. That's, that's a disaster. So I think our prayers and thoughts are with Jason and his family, particularly around this time of the year. Second, the board put me on the CEDS, the SEDS Committee, as part of the Regional Commission, and last week, Mr. Stovall was elected chairman, but they elected me vice chair. I think it's because I showed up to the meeting. Number three, a week ago Monday, we had the lighting of the Christmas tree at the South County Library. Mr. Peters was there at AMC. I had an opportunity to make a few comments. Mr. Radford was there. I really want to thank Wendy Schultz and all the folks at Parks and Rec. Want to thank Tony Cox, library director. They just did a great job. It was, it was excellent. And finally, I just want to wish all our citizens Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Please be safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Hooker?
I have just a couple of comments. Number one, I want to thank the citizens of the area that came out, and we've, we've got a great community, and we enjoy and need to hear from you, so thank you for being here. Really exciting news. We found out yesterday that we won four different Vatti grants, and it's really exciting news as far as expanding broadband, working with Craig Bodata Electric Cooperative, working with Cox, Shuntel, B2X, working with Franklin County, and we're really excited about how many people who have been unserved and underserved are going to be given this opportunity that we so take for granted now and is considered a utility, that many in our community have not, not had access to broadband. So we're very excited about that, very thankful to have won those, those grants. Congratulations to my board members who were invested yesterday, Mr. Peters, Mr. North, and Mr. Radford. Congratulations. It was a great ceremony, and we appreciate your leadership and continued leadership. And as Mr. Mahoney mentioned earlier, our hearts are just a little deened today as we consider Mr. Peters and what his family is going through today, so we will continue to remember them in our, in our thoughts and prayers. On a happier note, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Ms. Hooker. Mr. North?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good news. The infrastructure bill has earmarked a lot of money to the state of Virginia over the next five years, about $400 million in federal funds geared towards airports. And in Roanoke-Blacksburg, we should get about $15 million, which will help our airport. The STB, which is the Surface Transportation Board, funds amounting to $25 million. Roanoke County venting projects have been submitted. Doesn't mean we're going to get all of them approved, but they have been submitted across the region for consideration. I also would like to congratulate Mr. Kaywood, new county administrator February 1, 2022. I suggest folks get him a bottle of Tylenol for Christmas. He's going to need it. And best of luck to you in the future. And stop smiling, Mr. O'Donnell. Even with your mask on, I can tell. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Peters family. It is sad, and I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. North, and I'll finish up with tonight's comments. I too have a heavy heart for the Peters family. Yesterday, when we had the investiture ceremony, Jason Peters was there, his wife, and two smaller children, and he told the crowd that was gathered there in the courthouse, he was there, and he said his son had about two hours to live. And it is just, it's so heartbreaking, and we just, we continue to lift up our prayers to Jason and Kathy. And then, a little happier note, I got my daughter married off last weekend, and so, so happy to see her and her new, new husband all flourishing.
Do you need a loan?
What's that?
Do you need a loan?
No, no, no. We gave him a little bit of money, but.
He's got 30 days.
Yeah, right. And I too want to welcome Mr. Kaywood to that new, new position, and you might need ibuprofen. Tylenol, just not strong enough.
Apparently, I need a bigger medicine cabinet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you might, anyway, glad to have, have you in that position. And likewise, Mr. O'Donnell, enjoy those mountain bike rides, those hockey, hockey games, and just walking around outside enjoying that. And for Roanoke County residents, also add Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.